Good evening. Welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for July 15, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Carolyn Smart, present.
And Colin McNabb, present. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being tape recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. We have 1 deletion, 3.3, review request of Fire Chief Mark Boynton to create new position of Fire Chief Mechanic. And we're going to add 3.8A. Review and sign contract between the Water Department and StanTech for SCADA system. 3.10, review and approve Building Commissioner's request for transfer appropriations. And 4.3, which is vote to appoint an associate member to the Planning Board. All righty. Approval of meeting minutes, we have none. We do have an appointment, which we'll do at the end. 3.1, review and approve request from Recreation Commission to increase the revolving fund spending authorization. Andy?
So the Recreation Commission operates under a revolving fund. At the town meeting in May of 2013, we approved a spending authorization up to $52,000. As has happened in several of the years since I've been around, they needed an additional authorization, which we approved during the course of the year, another $15,000. And then in the last month or so, they've run up some additional bills that has exceeded their total $67,000 spending authorization. They're allowed to spend, they can essentially spend whatever's in the revolving account as long as they have an authorization. But we typically keep the authorization somewhat on par with what they've brought in for receipts. So the Chairman of the Recreation Commission, Alice Kennedy, submitted a form to us the other day. It was after the packets went out, so it wasn't in your packets. In that, she asked for an additional spending authorization of $8,000. I just, in the last couple of hours, got a final breakdown from Kim Fails, the accountant. They need a little bit less than the $8,000, so the $8,000 will carry them there. They're going to be over by about $55,39. And again, it's all money that's in their revolving account. It's money that they raise through their program fees and the camp fees and things like that.
And I see that the Finance Committee is here as well.
Correct. It requires the approval of both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, we do this almost every year. I think we do it for a couple of them are revolving. So I would move to approve the authorization of $8,000 in addition in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53, E and a half, for the revolving recreation account.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we do have one other transfer, small transfer that came in late today. So it's good you're here. And Colin, if you'd like, maybe we could go to 3.10, 3.10.
Sure.
To do the transfer for the electrical inspector. And that way, the Planets Committee would be...
All right. We're going to jump down to 3.10. Review and approve Building Commissioner's request for transfer appropriations in the amount of $101.24 from Building Department expenses to electrical inspector expenses for mileage reimbursements.
So in the information that I put in front of you tonight, there's a memo from Rich Hanks that the electrical inspector went over by $101.
Right there.
This is pretty directly attributable to the uptick in building permit activity that we're seeing. If you recall, a month or so ago, we did a similar transfer for the plumbing inspector. He also went over his mileage authorization. So, and in talking with Rich, permit activity has been pretty good. So the signature I didn't get up on the next page.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the request for transfer of appropriations in the amount of $101.24 to be transferred to, to be transferred from the building inspector account to 41 expenses to be transferred to the electrical inspector mileage account.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All righty. 3.3, we're skipping. 3.4, review and approve Chapter 90 project request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, in the amount of $20,000 to reclaim and pave the entire length of Spalding Street.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to address 3.2, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped too far ahead. Let's go back to 3.2. Review and approve one-year extension of agreement for government access television and related services with Radio Engineering Associates. Hi, Steve.
How are you?
So we did a request for proposals last year for a one-year contract for the government access TV contract. We do a one-year contract with the opportunity for two one-year extensions. So should have done this back in June and kind of overlooked it, so getting cut up and back on track.
So you're all good with this, Steve?
Yes.
All right.
All right. I would move that we approve the one-year extension for government access television and related services with Radio Engineering Associates.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on.
Do you want me to sign anything?
No, we'll just do a letter extending the contract for another year.
3.4, review and approve Chapter 90 project request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, in the amount of $20,000 to reclaim and pave the entire length of Spalding Street. That's very good.
Yeah, Spalding is one of the top five streets most in need of repair, so it's going to do a full-length reconstruction of the road.
It is sorely in need of attention.
Yeah, it sure is.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Chapter 90 project request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, in the amount of $20,000 to reclaim and pave the entire length of Spalding Street.
Second. 3.4 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.5, review and approve Chapter 90 project request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, in the amount of $38,800 to prepare data collection, field survey, base plan, preliminary design, environmental permitting assistance, final design and bidding assistance for the removal of the existing 36-inch culverts and replace with new culverts at Old Meeting House Road.
There are two others here on that prior one. The, on the end of Old Meeting House Road that you access off of South Throw Street, there's a culvert that crosses, I think it's Bixby Brook, or maybe a double culvert there. The culverts are failing, and there's a plate over the road there in order to allow traffic to pass. There's only a couple of houses on the other side. I think there are three houses, including a horse farm on the other side. But it needs to be fixed. So this $38,800 would be for the survey and engineering work and permitting associated with getting the project in the queue for funding for replacement.
Western Sampson, they give a complete description of what they'll be doing. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Chapter 90 project request from Ed Kukula, Highway Superintendent, in the amount of $38,800 to prepare data collection, field survey, base plan, preliminary design, environmental permitting assistance, and final design and bidding assistance for the removal of the existing 36-inch culvert to replace with the new culvert at Old Meeting House Road.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Well, she doesn't know about that this specifically, but she knows what the plan was. Colin, I don't know if you want to skip 3.6. Maybe more appropriate to discuss it when we...
Have a full board?
Have a full board. It's really just acknowledging the receipt, but it may be appropriate to put it off.
I agree. Are you all right with that?
Yeah, I would recuse myself of anything, anyway.
So we're going to delete as well 3.6. Review and discuss correspondence from Water Department regarding transfer of water collections from Water Department to Town Collector. We are going to wait until we have a full board, until Sue is back from vacation. 3.7, vote to confirm and disclose the memorandum of agreement with telecommunications union.
Just a sort of crossing the T and dotting the I's thing. We approved this at the last meeting. We're required under the law to acknowledge the existence of a contract, labor contract or personal services contract. So just acknowledging that we did enter into a memorandum of agreement between the town and the telecommunications union.
We voted in the executive session to approve it, so should we just reconfirm the vote and open?
Yeah, that would be sufficient.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we confirm and disclose the memorandum of agreement with the telecommunications union.
Andy, is that, is it going to, has it been put on the website with the other contract?
It has.
Okay.
Yeah, it has.
So if anyone's curious, they can look on the town website. Second, motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.8, review and sign contract between Water Department and StanTech for SCADA system construction administration in the amount of $31,300.
The Water Department went out to bid for this project. The SCADA system is the, I can never remember what the initials stand for, but it is a technology system that links all of the various components of the water system together. Pumps, wells, tanks, everything, so they can, essentially they can read it all from a central location.
I remember Niles coming to the Capitol Planning meeting.
Yes, right.
And presenting that.
Yep.
That's been ongoing for a while. Just for disclosure purposes, there is an opinion on file with the town clerk and a disclosure to let everyone know that I'm a part-time employee there, but I have no financial interest, and it's okay if I approve and sign this. Anybody that wants it, it's on file with the town clerk. You have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, then I would move that we approve and sign the contract between the Water Department and Western Sampson, CMR, Inc., for SCADA system upgrade in the amount of $156,249.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andy, did the Water Department sign it last night?
Yes.
Did? Oh, yeah. There it is. And Kim still has to sign them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't look and see what the amount was that was approved on Capitol. I think they're well within there.
Yeah, I think it came in quite below what was...
I think it's $250, but I'm not sure.
All right. 3.8A, review and sign contract between Water Department and StanTech for SCADA system construction administration in the amount of $31,000. I think actually I read that one first.
Did you?
I did.
Well, I approved the $156, so...
So $31,300. Moving on.
So this is related to that project. This is for StanTech to provide construction services while the SCADA system is being constructed and implemented. This contract is, was signed by the Water Commission about a month and a half ago. And so we're just closing the loop on this one as well.
Yeah, I noticed they had payment in the bill's payable warrant, so it probably caught up to them, huh?
Correct.
Yep. Okay, I would move that we approve and sign the contract between the Water Department and StanTech for the SCADA system construction administration in the amount of $31,300.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's no line to sign.
Yeah, you'll just have to do it underneath.
It's very difficult for them to remember this.
I didn't get it till late in the game.
Has Kim reviewed this? I'm sure she's the one that sent this forward, or insisted that it come forward. So she's reviewed it?
Yeah, she's looked at it.
Because I have not reviewed this contract, so... And Rick Holland has as well? I'm hoping.
We just received it this week.
So we don't know if Rick has reviewed this?
I don't know if Rick has seen it. I know that Paul was working with Rick. It's a pretty standard agreement for construction services, but if you want, we can send it off to...
Just send it, just make sure he's aware. I'd appreciate it.
3.9, review and discuss alternative gas pipeline route proposed by Beaverbrook Association and review draft correspondence. I don't know if this is more appropriate when Sue gets back, because it's something she's very interested in. And she also was, we selected her to be the representative on the multi-town group.
Sure.
Maybe we could do it right before town meeting, then, Andy? Because we, I'd actually...
Yeah, that would be appropriate. I don't think there's any great rush.
No, but I think it's a good idea that we let them know that our unhappiness, a lot of people are very upset about the alternative plan. And I had actually asked Andy if he thought it was appropriate to send a letter, and he did a good job of drafting one up for us. So I have no problem waiting for Sue's signature as well, but as long as we can do it before town meeting, not too much longer.
Absolutely, yeah.
And thank you. That's just what I was thinking.
Okay. We already did 3.10. 4.1, vote to reappoint Karen Kulata to the Meeting Hall Gallery Committee for a term from July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Karen Kulata to the Meeting Hall Gallery Committee for a term effective July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2016.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just curious, Andy, are the meeting hall appointments staggered in two years? Or did we do like one, two, three years? I don't...
I think we did ones, twos, and threes.
Okay, so that's a two-year term? All right, then.
What's that?
Yep.
4.2, vote to appoint John D'Angelo Lo to Fire EMS Headquarters Building Committee.
I would move that we appoint John D'Angelo to the Fire EMS Headquarters Building Committee.
Second.
What a fine choice that is.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4.3, vote to appoint Jerelyn Bozekis as associate member of the Planning Board for one-year term from July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015. Didn't we already do this?
Yeah, we did, I think it was in either April or May, we did a joint appointment with the Planning Board.
Oh, right, right, right.
For the remainder of the fiscal year.
Yeah, okay. That's why it reminds me, yeah.
Yeah, I had to go back and look, too. The associate is a one-year position.
Okay.
So I would move to appoint Jerelyn Bozekis as associate member of the Planning Board for a one-year term effective July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along. 5.1, Board of Selectmen updates and reports. Carolyn?
I have a few, and I have a few announcements to read. This is, I'm just asking this as a request, Andy, and maybe you could relay it to Sulicio, but I thought maybe we could have a meeting in the near future with Rich Hanks and the Fire Chief to discuss. I know they're moving forward with the high school to look at additional inspections they're going to be up against, and maybe to discuss the permits.
Okay.
Kind of going forward, so if we could kind of put something together, you know, late August or something to get that, talk about that before it just comes up and they request it.
Yeah, we had talked about that quite a while ago, too, didn't we, Andy? Back when Bob was still here, when we waived some fees or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, and I know they're moving forward in the...
It's a good idea to talk.
And I know there's going to be a lot of additional workload for our Fire Department, Building Department, so maybe we can share some of that workload with Ashby and Pepper, or at least discuss it. Just, the other thing I did want to say is Karen Clement kind of organized some volunteers, and in particular Cynthia Scholzer went down, and they cleaned up the Kids Country Playground and planted flowers, and it really looked nice, and I just wanted to recognize that, for us to recognize that. Another update that I had was just on the pipeline. We have a statewide rolling protest that's going across the state, and in Townsend, it's going to be June 21st. It's going to start at the VFW parking lot, and everyone's going to walk down to the center.
Date again?
June 21st, July 21st. Thank you for that. And they were asking everyone to wear red shirts if you want to be part of the march, and then I guess the pipe will be passed on to Pepper, so it's coming from Ashby to Townsend and then to Pepper. And then I guess on August 5th, there's going to be a meeting with Representative Harrington, and then the Shoba Valley Chamber of Commerce for any updates on the pipeline. That's going to be held at the Lunenburg High School. I didn't get a time yet, but, do you know what time it's at, Andy? I know you have the email.
I believe it's at 7 o'clock, but...
Maybe we could put it on our website.
Yeah, I'll look.
And then the town clerk asked me to let everybody know that on Monday, July 21st, is the last day to register to vote for the special town meeting. The town's clerk's office will remain open until 8:00 p.m., and then Tuesday, July 22nd, the town clerk's office will close at 5:00 p.m., and will be closed on July 23rd for training. There was one more announcement you had here. What did I, didn't you put something else here, Andy?
Was this, I was going to do this one.
Oh, you took that one? Okay. And I think that's it.
Okay. So I only, I have one announcement. The Townsend Fire EMS Relief Association will host the lawn party at the Townsend Military Band's Thursday, July 17 concert on the Townsend Common. Townsend Fire EMS personnel will be selling hot dogs, hamburgers, and sausages to hungry concertgoers. They will also have cold soda and bottled water for sale. Fire EMS personnel will set up a moonwalk, a dunk tank, and a penny pitch game on the Common for the evening of enjoyment of young people attending the concert. Venture Crew Number 30 will be assisting the Fire EMS personnel at the July 17 lawn party. The Townsend Military Band will open its program at 7:30 p.m. by playing Valdras March by Hansen and Nimrod by Elgar, the polka from, gosh, maybe I shouldn't have read this one. Chwan Da by Weizenberg, and Morrissey's Caribbean Fantasy will be performed. Former Hawthorne Brook Middle School band director Ken Arsenal will conduct the band in the playing of Air and Takata for band by Erickson during the first portion of the And so on and so on. The reason I actually wanted to read this is because the dunk tank, if you have any frustrations with local government, you'll get a chance to dunk me at the band concert. I have volunteered to be in the hot seat at the dunk tank, as has our new Fire Chief, Mark Boynton. So it'll, I don't know how much it'll be, but it'll be well worth the price.
Are there rain checks? Because I'm not going to be around.
No. That's all I have. So town administrator updates and reports.
Couldn't resist. Carolyn mentioned a couple of things about the pipeline. She mentioned the town meeting and the last data register. Town meeting will, special town meeting will be at Hawthorne Brook Middle School, 7:00 p.m. on July 31st, in the auditorium and the cafeteria. And as you mentioned earlier, Colin, the Pipeline Coalition has formed. We've had a couple of meetings. I had another meeting yesterday. It started out as the Middlesex County Coalition, and it's already sort of broadened to potentially include communities outside of Middlesex County. So I think we had 10 or 11 communities there yesterday, which is a little bit more than we had two weeks ago when we met the first time. So we're working just on mission statement, trying to figure out exactly how to organize ourselves and move forward to protect the interests of the communities that are potentially impacted by this project. So there'll be more updates as we go forward, but that is happening. And then just in terms of the Board's regular schedule, we don't have a regular meeting until August 12th. So we'll have a...
I actually should say as well, I did, I do know when I'm going on vacation. It'll be the first full week in August that we're gone.
You know, I had a thought when we were talking about the special town meeting. When we'd had the town meetings in Hawthorne Brook before, we always had to hire Belltronics to run the sound for the microphones. Do they have a sound system? Is that...
Yeah, actually Hartley and I are going over there tomorrow to see how things work over there, make sure that we can tap into what they've got. So by the sounds of it, from some communication between, mostly between Hartley and the school department, it sounds like they have a system that we can tie right into.
Okay, good. I thought of that after we moved to us much good if we got there.
I might add something to that, because something I don't know about yet. We're going to run a closed circuit video feed from the auditorium into the gymnasium in case it will crowd. I don't know, I've done that before for graduation ceremonies over there. We've been able to run audio into the gymnasium. I don't know if we will be able, if I will be able to run audio out of there in case anyone has a question, asking question from the gymnasium. That is something the people over there would have to handle, because that's something that I don't think I have the equipment for. But we'll talk about that again before the, long before the meeting, I hope.
Sure.
Just to let everyone know.
Yeah, if you want to talk to John Barrett, too, if we do have a lot of people, make sure he has somebody he can deputize there, like we did here.
Yeah.
So that's going to be at 7:00 p.m. then, right?
Yeah, 7:00.
We'll just meet a little early.
7:00 p.m., correct.
Okay.
5.3, review and sign payroll and bill's payable warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we review and sign the payroll and the bill's payable warrant outside of session.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn at 7:30.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks. Thank you.
Thank you.